I hereby reconvene the February 11, 2014, meeting of the Marion County School Board. Good evening. By the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cell phone and put them on vibrate. Today, tonight, we'll still have a partial technical problem. You will not be able to see the votes, but we will be voting electronically up here, but you will not be able to see them on the screen, so please make a note of that. Ms. Debbie Jenkins, Director of Career and Technology and Technical Education, please introduce the students who will be providing us with inspiration and lead us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you, Mr. James, and good evening, Board. At this time, I'd like to introduce Rebecca Kane, who is Southeastern Youth Fair Ambassador and representing 4-H tonight, who will give the inspiration. And then we have Noah Barrett, Jordan Fox, and Kalen Kleckner, who are the Westport High School Food Science Judging Team, who will lead us in the pledge.
Follow your dream. Take one step at a time and don't settle for less. Just continue to climb. Follow your dream. If you stumble, don't stop and lose sight of your goal. Press to the top, for only on top can we see the whole view. Can we see that what we've done and what we can do? Can we then have the vision to seek something new? Press on. Follow your dream.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanted to take just a moment and recognize Noah, Jordan, and Kalen from Westport FFA. As I said earlier, they placed second in the state in the Food Science Career Development Event, which was held in January. And this event requires a written essay, a sensory evaluation, a hazard analysis scenario, and a team product development event. And they'll have to explain to you what all of that is if you're interested. They all placed in the top four individually, and we're extremely proud of these students. And if Rebecca and Molly will come back, of course, I think you all hopefully have heard the Southeastern Youth Fair is fast approaching, and we want to take this opportunity to invite each of you to come and visit. Fair begins on February 22. And our Youth Fair ambassadors Molly and Rebecca have for each of you a schedule of the events for the week and also the youth fair program. And if you browse through, you will find, recognize, I'm sure, some of the 1,000 students from Marion County Public Schools that participate each year through FFA, 4-H, and family and consumer science. And as always, Board, thank you for support of our students at the fair. Thank you for the support of the fair, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you. Debbie, this is the point where I can talk about the fair and encourage everyone. Would you have those kids please stand for just a minute? Y'all just stand for just a minute. Okay, one of the things I would like for you to do is look at how they're dressed. And throughout the whole district, these youngsters are dressed in this form, this shape. And it's pride in what we do with our kids that are in the FFA. I notice we have a 4-H back there, and the 4-H is at what school now? What school do you go to?
I go to Vanguard.
Vanguard.
I think she's in that, but they also are.
I'm actually saying 4-H. Vice President.
And the beauty of what I'm sharing with you is the fact that this program impact a lot of students. It helped them with their dress, their speech, their personalities, and it helped them present a product. And I would encourage any of you and all of you to go out to the Southeastern Youth Fair. The 4-H is special in the sense that they provide an opportunity for kids that didn't have the opportunity or chose not to go into the FFA. And there are several 4-H groups out there that really impact the lives of students through the service and the care of farm products and things. So I'm a firm believer in that. And so, once again, thank you for a job that you all will do, and I know that you're putting in a lot of volunteer hours out there. Let's give them a round of applause. It does take a lot. Thank you. Ms. Ely.
This is for Rebecca, who gave us the inspiration words beginning. That's kind of like the Olympics, you know? I mean, y'all are following your dream, you're winners at what you're doing, and if you're watching the Olympics, that's their focus. You know, they have a dream, they have a vision, and they're going for it, and so are you. And I was in 4-H through high school. It's a great organization. I learned how to sew and cook. Not great, but it helped me, so congratulations.
Ms. Elsormun, welcome back to town, by the way. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the agenda for the February 11, 2014, School Board Meeting. With the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford and it was second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, by the way, you can vote. You can vote.
We can vote.
Just want show on the board.
Okay.
We thought we were all for the aye.
We're slowly getting there.
My blondness is spreading down this way.
The motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 14, 2014, School Board Meeting? May I have a motion and a second?
A move.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Borton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. The motion passed five zero. Mr. Chester Gregory, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, will be providing us a departmental overview of the operation on area. Mr. Gregory.
Good evening, Mr. James, Board Members, Mr. Superintendent. I'm here tonight to talk to you about a special group of individuals, and that's the support group, the operations side of the school system. The blue collar workers, individuals that support the school system in many, many ways and bring an expertise that keeps our system running. My presentation tonight certainly will not resemble the great presentations that Ms. Brewer and perhaps Ms. DeWes offered you, because I'm a man of few words, as Mr. Callahan will often tell me. But I will move forward here with the operations presentation. In operations, we have athletics, custodial services, facilities, planning and government relations, technical services, technology, and transportation. A lot of employees doing many varied jobs, and they all do it well. With athletics, we have Mr. Ed McPadden, who oversees the athletics, and with that, he does physical education K through 12, works in conjunction with K-12 academics, Mrs. Brewer, and establishing training and staff development for all the PE teachers here in the county. He also oversees the driver ed program that takes place at the schools and during the summer. High school athletics, he oversees 25 varsity competitions or varsity teams, 14 of those are women, 11 are male. In Marion County, we have approximately 4,500 students that participate in athletics. Sure, some of them are duplicated names. In other words, they'll play football, or they play basketball, or they may play baseball or soccer or whatever. But that's 4,500 students that go out there and are participating in our athletic programs. He also oversees the middle school intermural programs. In the middle schools, we have cross-country volleyball, basketball, and track, in which approximately 1,000 middle school students will participate after school. That's a great thing. Keeps them off the streets and at a time of development that they need. We also offer a wide, he also oversees activities and clubs within our high schools, in which the approximate number is about 6,800 students that will participate in some type of club or activity. Again, that's involvement in our schools. Next on the agenda is custodial services. Now, as I was preparing for this presentation, it's sort of hard to come up with wonderful, glorious words that describes some of the jobs our individuals do. So custodial services is custodial services. We're dealing with grounds. They are responsible for obviously maintaining all the grounds over which 1,400 acres, just mowing, has to be done throughout the year. They also take care of our athletic fields. This is a crew that will respond to emergency situations. Lake Worth Middle School is a perfect example. From last week, we moved a number of grounds crew individuals there, along with tech services, and they were able to get that school back up and running in about an hour and a half. They also help with special disaster, our Special Olympics, and also when it comes FCAT time, they're out there moving boxes around to help us out. So between custodial and grounds, they do a tremendous job keeping our grounds and looking good, okay? Next on the list, facilities. Now with facilities, 641 brick and mortar buildings, approximately 464 portables, square foot, square footage, approximately 8 million square feet that we take care of. Tremendous challenge to the facilities department. Within that, we have energy management. Obviously, they maintain the environmental conditions within the schools, and as some of the board members know, we've seen a tremendous savings. I believe the last estimate was somewhere around $23 billion through our energy management program that we've been able to bring back into the district. Also, within facilities, we have environmental safety. That's Mr. Steagle that goes out and performs safety checks throughout our campuses to ensure that everything's safe and ready to go. Within the construction, obviously, you've heard Mr. Knight up here before, he is the supervisor over custodial, I mean, over facilities, does an excellent job within the construction. They're worried about the contract maintenance, management of direct purchases, managing special services, contract maintenance, development of projected work, and payment authorization. We also do permitting and design within that area, dealing with issuing permits, inspections, and final inspections in order to get into the building itself. One of the biggest issues is the fish report. Some of you administrators, ex-administrators out there know that the fish report, that is accountability we have to do with DOE. We have to account for how every room, every space is used. Any upgrades, any modifications must be reported, and that's all part of the facilities department that they take care of. Planning and government relations. Many times, you've witnessed Mr. Hurley, he'd come before you, okay? Man of many trades, many hats. Obviously, his job is to coordinate with all the state, local, city governments to ensure that we're meeting all the code specifications that we have to meet. He also works and looks for property that we may acquire for future school sites, and he supports the various departments, whether it's over in facilities or technical services or a project that I have him working on right now, is how can we utilize bus transportation in the ESE department to save us in transportation dollars? So he puts a lot of good figures for us out there so that we can try to save money the best we can, okay? Technical services. Now, this is where I struggle. Carpentry. How do I describe the carpentry department? How do I describe the electoral? AC, heating? These are individuals that are actually experts in their job. They come forward, they move out every day, whether it's responding to a broken water line on Super Bowl weekend, repairing a water line there at NH Jones, or responding to issues at night. But these people are experts. They're quality people. They work hard for us. They're out there doing many various jobs to ensure that the schools open up each day. Technology. Over 25,000 computers, okay? That's what we run every day out here in the system. Many of those need upgrade, many of them need repair. We offer a help desk here that the schools can call in and get immediate support through our DSTs that are out there at the schools, supporting the schools not only in computer repair, but also technology itself. We have a data operations center that maintains support for all of our fiber networks, and when you realize that we support about 50,000 accounts, we are heavily involved into the parent portal. All these come through data center operations. We go into the infrastructure in which, again, they're out there in the schools, they're working hard, they're maintaining the systems that we have. MIS, that's headed up by Ms. Vons, Vicki Vons. This is where we get our money. They maintain the FTE records, they handle all the reporting, they do the amendments, they watch, look for every dollar that we can capture from Tallahassee in order to run the system. Telecommunications, these guys handle the fire alarm systems, the phone systems, two-way radio systems, and last but not least is our TV production crew that's here tonight. You know, three of the six individuals, I believe one's in the truck, but they handle all the special events that we have, from board meetings to the Christmas parade to Golden Apple, et cetera. So again, that's our technology and information services department. Last but not least is transportation. We put about 264 buses on the road every day, covered almost 32,000 miles. That's a lot of fuel, a lot of energy, a lot of maintenance, especially with a fleet of buses that's getting older. We operate four garages throughout the county and regional areas so that we can support system. Our ridership count for the October was approximately 25,000 students. Our first semester, one of the things that we do to try to entice our drivers to stay with us is we monitor perfect attendance. That saves us money. This past, or this first semester time period, we had 143 drivers and aides out of about 400 individuals that had perfect attendance for the first semester, and that's a tremendous credit to them. Approximately, we have about 360 buses in the fleet, along with about 300 white fleet. One of the things that you might need to know about the buses is that every 28 days, they have to be inspected, and they must be serviced, and that's DOE regulation. And so, that's a lot of time and effort, maintaining, surveying the buses, and making sure that they're safe each day that they walk out, okay? I tried to be short, sweet, to the point. Hopefully, that gave you an oversight of operations.
Okay, Ms. Ely.
Great presentation, and your words, they were few, but they were exactly what was up there. So I do have a question. The day custodians that are now in six of the schools that we've changed to plant managers, what of the list of projects or the services that you've showed us, do they do during the day exactly? They're not in the cafeteria.
They do a combination of minor maintenance, you know, work that...
Like the HVAC? HVAC?
Yes. They go around, they take care of the systems, they take care of small things that may have broken during the course of the day. That's about 80% of their job. The other 20% deals with custodial work, supporting. At these contracted schools, the contractor has an individual on campus already. He works with them, supports them.
Is that working out pretty well?
The plant manager's working out real well so far. We're very happy with it, because what they're doing is that they're maintaining contact with those contract workers that come out each day.
The night group?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Chester, do you have some of our employees back there that work in this very department?
I have David Hurley.
Would you have them please stand? All of them, I see...
And I've got, obviously, my TV crew here.
Thank you.
Oh, Becky's here.
Okay, now, Becky just got moved up, right?
She is the interim bus transportation coordinator. She comes to the board, I believe, the next meeting for approval. But Becky is taking over for Bobby Englehart, who retired after about 33 years here into January.
Well, I just wanted to let you know that I was out at Dunellum Middle School where we had that problem with that. I don't know whether it was a tire or whatever. I just want to commend the people that, the crew that came and got those kids, called the parents, and really got that bus back to the, I guess, to the bus depot. They did an excellent job on that day, and it was a short day. And so, I know they were under a lot of pressure, so they really did a good job, and they need to be commended for that. When you see them, especially in that area, tell them they did a good job. I just saw you, and I thought I'd let you know that those guys are working on that end. Okay. Thank you, Chester.
Okay.
May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing the month of February as Career and Technical Education Month? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was so moved by Mr. Crawford and it was second by Mrs. Borton. All in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, the motion passed five zero. Deputy Superintendent Rick Langford and Ms. Debbie Jenkins, Director of Career and Technical Education, please come forward for the reading of the presentation of the proclamation. Ms. Jenkins, I believe you have some students with you as well.
Good evening, Board. As you know, usually Kevin Christian is here to read the proclamations. I may be a poor substitute, but I'll try to get through this, and we're going to present this to Ms. Jenkins and her fellow workers that deserve this. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the month of February has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, and whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our education system; and whereas career and technical education provides Americans with a school-to-careers connection and is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce which fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to America's leadership in the international marketplace; and whereas career and technical education gives middle and high school students experience in practical, meaningful applications of basic skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, thus improving the quality of their education, motivating potential dropouts, and giving all students leadership opportunities in their fields and their communities; and whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills which provide them with career choices and potential satisfaction; and whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts of career and technical educators and business and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the School Board of Marion County, Florida, proclaims the month of February to be Career and Technical Education Month, dated this 11th day of February 2014, signed by each of the board members and the superintendent. I present this to Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Langford, and I just wanted to take the opportunity, you know I love bragging on students, to introduce, and I ask them to accept this proclamation on behalf of all Marion County Public School career students. But these are students from CTAE, which most of you know is our post-secondary career branch of Marion County Public Schools. And we have with us this evening Mrs. Kristen Curtis, who's in our welding program. We have Mr. Gary Gray, Commercial Foods and Culinary Arts. And then from our two newest programs, we have Jonathan Patrick Korsjak, our Practical Nursing. He'll be the first graduating class of the nursing program. And then we have on the end Nick Buhr, who's with our new cybersecurity program. And I want to just say a little bit about Nick. He's former military, he's served three tours in Iraq. He's a resident of Kansas, and he moved his family to Ocala to come to CTAE. He pays out-of-state tuition, and he did this to pursue his cybersecurity certification. So we're, of course, very proud and honored to have Nick, and also, Nick, thank you for serving our country. And thank you, Board, and of course, all District Administration, for your continued support of all career and technical education programs. And I want to give a special thanks to all of our career and technical teachers. They're the ones who work hard each and every day to prepare our students for the world of work. So thank you.
Board. May I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 414-01, refunding certificates of participation series 2014 not to exceed $36 million. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was motion by Mr. Crawford, second by Mrs. Borton. But before we take the final vote on this, I'd love for Ms. Teresa Ellis to come up and introduce all those people that she brought that's here with her. So Ms. Ellis, would you come up and just...
Good evening, Board Members.
You can tell us a little bit about it, too, ma'am.
Basically, I would like to introduce the folks that have been working with us for many years. With PFM, we have Brent Wilder and Laura Howe, and with Bryant Miller Olive, Judd Freeman, our bond attorneys. If some of you may remember, back in 2005, we issued certificate of participation for Hammett Bowen Elementary, also for the renovations of Vanguard High School and North Marion Middle High School. Also, I believe the cafeteria work for Lake Worth High, so that was beginning of the renovations for Lake Worth High. So I am going to turn it over to them to talk to you a little bit about what we're doing, but this is good news and potential savings for the district.
Good evening, Brent Wilder with PFM. It's a pleasure to see you again, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Mr. Superintendent. Before you tonight is a resolution prepared by Judd Freeman, Bryant Miller and Olive that would authorize staff to go forward with the potential refunding of the 2005 COPs. There are certain restrictions in here that preclude anything from happening unless certain savings can be achieved, so let me put everyone at ease. There's nothing moves forward unless we can achieve a minimum amount of savings to you. The threshold that the School Board has traditionally observed is a 3% savings in present value terms. In this particular transaction, that means a minimum savings to you in today's dollars of approximately $900,000 or $100,000 a year in debt service savings that could be used for other capital purposes. What we propose to do via this resolution, if the Board so approves, is to do a solicitation... If we can achieve the savings that would be required, then Mr. Freeman and his team would draft all the necessary documents to then come back and present to you before any further action could be taken. So that'll turn it over to Mr. Freeman for any further comments.
I'm Joe Freeman with Bryant Miller Olive and Brent stole my thunder. But like you said, like you said, we'll come back to you with a more technical resolution with some documents attached, assuming that we meet our savings targets, then we'll move forward with that.
Thank you. Board members? Thank you. Resolution is still on the board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the following donation? Nineteen ninety-four Ezo, Ego, Ezo Golf are caught valued at one thousand dollars to Belleville High School from Doug Reddick, four thousand five hundred dollars to Emory Showus Elementary School from their business partner Closet Maid Corporation via the Public Education Foundation, three thousand dollars to Forest High School from Chester Wingate, four thousand dollars to Lakeware High School from Mark Sumner and Lottie Weddington, two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars to Lakeware High School from their business partner Lockheed Modern Corporation via the Public Education Foundation, fourteen thousand five hundred dollars to Lakeware, Lakeware Middle School from their business partner Closet Maid Corporation via the Public Education Foundation, five thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from Signature Brand. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mrs. Boynton. Some meeting reminders. Oh, sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the following donation? Nineteen ninety-four Ezo, Ego, Ezo Golf are caught valued at one thousand dollars to Belleville High School from Doug Reddick, four thousand five hundred dollars to Emory Showus Elementary School from their business partner Closet Maid Corporation via the Public Education Foundation, three thousand dollars to Forest High School from Chester Wingate, four thousand dollars to Lakeware High School from Mark Sumner and Lottie Weddington, two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars to Lakeware High School from their business partner Lockheed Modern Corporation via the Public Education Foundation, fourteen thousand five hundred dollars to Lakeware, Lakeware Middle School from their business partner Closet Maid Corporation via the Public Education Foundation, five thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from Signature Brand. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mrs. Boynton. Some meeting reminders.
Put your vote on it.
Oh, sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five zero, and I will have Mrs. Boynton to thank you tonight.
I want to thank all of our private donors and our business partners who partnered with us for your generous donation. We couldn't do it without you, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
The next administrator in briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, February the twentieth, two thousand fourteen, at nine a.m. The purpose of this work session is to receive an update on Public Education Foundation and the Marion Technical Institute file, a draft job description, and proposed salary for an in-house attorney, attorney, and to discuss the proposed revisal to the Board Policy nine point four zero, advertising in school. Okay, the Chair will now recognize Ms. Beverly Morris.
Board, I'm notifying you that advice is needed regarding a pending litigation styled CT plaintiff versus the School Board of Marion County, a political subdivision of the state of Florida et al. defendant. The School Board is represented by Attorneys Usher L. Brown and Amy Pitch with the law firm of Brown et al. Pursuant to Section two eighty-six point oh one one eight, Florida statutes known as the government in the Sunshine Act, on behalf of Attorneys Brown and Pitch, I am requesting a session with the Board for the sole purpose of discussing settlement negotiations and strategies related to this matter. I will ask the Board Secretary to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this session and the names of the persons attending to be published. It is suggested that the session be held at the end of the administrative briefing and work session scheduled for February twentieth, two thousand fourteen, approximately eleven thirty a.m. As required by this statute, only the chief executive officer or designate, board members, and legal counsel can be present. As required by statute, I will ask a court reporter to record the session. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the clerk of the School Board. Upon the conclusion of the litigation, the transcript will be made public record.
Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the Board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to Section two eight six point zero one one print eight, Florida statutes, to discuss the pending litigation.
If there is no objection, I will instruct our attorney to schedule the attorney-client session to be held at the end of the February twentieth, two thousand fourteen administrative briefing and work session at approximately eleven thirty a.m. Any objections? So, so be it. Board members, this is the point where we have an opportunity to express some of the things and talk about our committee reports. I'll be starting with you, Ms. Boynton, then we'll go down. Come back.
Can I come last? Come.
Okay. I'll come to you last. Mr. Crawford.
Thank you. Board members, let me just say, the ones that were on the Golden Apple Caravan had a lot of fun. It was, you hate to see people cry, but the surprise on some, some of the teachers' faces resulted, it was just wonderful. It is a, it is a tough pick out of my, I don't envy the committee that is making that selection. I know what the Rookie Teacher of the Year Committee went through. We had five excellent choices, and trying to decide between those five was, probably would have been almost as easy just to throw darts on a, on a, on a dartboard, but they were excellent choices, and I think we're going to see that, the Golden Apple. And I'm beginning to lose my voice. Mr. Superintendent, let me thank you for the information. I requested information on testing that we're doing in the school district, and I want to thank you for getting that to me as quickly as, as you did, and also the, the amount of it. I have been going through it, trying to put it in a format that I can get a handle on it. One thing I, is there, and this is to, to your credit, I see that we have reduced the number of tests and assessments that we're doing over, over the years in several grade levels. I compliment you on, on that. I am going to send you a memo. I have some questions on, on some of the areas. I know we can't do any, and it was very nice you provided both the local testing and assessment calendar, and also the one for the state. I know we can't do anything about the state requirements, but the, the local ones, I do have some questions. It seems like maybe in some areas, there is an over amount of testing, and you have to ask, you know, why, but I'll be getting that out to you. It has taken me a little longer than I, than I thought, but it is a, it is, is very interesting when you start delving into it and trying to see what is trying to be accomplished. And that's one of the questions I will have, is with this data that we're genning, what are we doing with it and, 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 you know, is it something that is, it is, will be an ultimate positive result on what we all know is, is the, is the big issue, which is the FCAT? So, but I will be getting that out to you as, as quickly as I have, but I just wanted to thank you, Wasa. You did it very, very quickly, and I do appreciate that. It's just taken longer to look at it than I anticipated.
I can't take full credit for that. Staff, of course, is working on that. And just to mention briefly, if I might, Mr. Chairman, as we all know, the state is venturing into a new assessment arena. And so obviously, our local assessments will mirror that, or will at least follow that. So we're kind of on pins and needles, waiting to see what DOE is going to deliver to us so that we can then deliver to our own local teachers and administrators the appropriate assessment, both volume and type of assessment that we do for our students. We know it's important, it's a big piece of the accountability picture, we're not shy of it, we just want to do it the right way.
I do appreciate, at least you were, and all the information you gave me, you were, you know, there was honest definition of, of what the tests were, unlike some of the stuff that we're hearing out of the state, where they think if they change the name, it suddenly makes everything right, and so, but I do thank you, and, and this is a, this is an issue, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to thank everyone that follow our School Board meetings. We appreciate it. I get so many calls, and I want to thank you all, and, and thank the Board members for all the work that they do. And I want to promise everyone, I will never back down to spirited debate. That is what our founding fathers did that made our country wonderful. Spirited debate is never, not civil. It is just that spirited debate. The earliest Code of Conduct Board policy conversations began Thursday, and I was shocked to say the least, that of the forty or fifty approximate committee members, we only had two parents, although one, Mr. Viennella did share with me, withdrew due to a conflicting schedule. We had zero classroom teachers on the committee and zero bus drivers on the committee. These are the people in the trenches that take care of our students and are most affected by the discipline in the county. I was also shocked that we've had a statute on the books for many, many years that has not made our Code of Conduct book, where teachers can remove a student from the classroom, and it's a certain policy that we have to put in place to do that. And that statute, I believe, is probably close to ten, eight or ten years old, and I don't know how we've escaped that. So I was glad to hear about that through the MEA, the President of the MEA. While I'm talking about my ideas on the Code of Conduct Committee and my new ideas that I'd like to share with how we can gather information, I think of a comment that President Theodore Roosevelt was at least credited with saying. He says, "To educate a child in mind and not also in morals is to educate a menace to society." I think if he could say four words to us before this Board, it would be, I rest my case. You all know how I feel strongly about discipline. I've always backed my children's teachers in the classroom to the extreme. My three children are the successful adults they are today because of the classroom, great classroom teachers they had in Marion County. I will continue thanking those teachers for what they did for my students and what they continue to do for other students. I will continue to back them. Since the meeting Thursday, I did get in touch with Mr. Viennella to share a new idea I have. Yeah, I talked to him about, why do we not have teachers on? He goes, "Mrs. Stacy, next year we're going to have it." And I said, "Let's do it this year. We don't need to wait." I hear all the time, "Let's do it next year." Well, let's do it this year. I suggested to Mr. Viennella that we put box at each school, and it will be a suggestion box, or a complaint box, whatever the teachers want to use it as. They will put their comments in that sealed box, and I would like to see them put them in an envelope, so that the envelopes come out of the box sealed, and Mr. Viennella would open them when he goes to his discipline committee, his discipline meetings, and he will read those to all of the discipline employees at one of his meetings. The more I thought about that, I thought, why not put one at the bus barn, bus depots also, to hear what the bus drivers have to say about our Code of Conduct policy, to see how we could tweak it and how it serves them. For Peter's sake, it's the teachers and the bus drivers that are most affected by what we do as a Board with our policy. We can't be successful unless the teachers can, can feel that we are supporting them, because what they do, it affects, it affects what happens in the classroom. So, I thought about it some more, and I think instead of just putting all of the envelopes in a box at each school, I thought, well, that might embarrass a principal if they open, say, Eighth Street Elementary, and they start reading the comments. I'd like to take all those envelopes and dump them in a bigger box, so no one really knows what school they came from. And each envelope, the teacher could write elementary teacher, middle high teacher. Nobody knows what school, so when they're, when they're open, the principals are not uncomfortable, saying, "That sounds like one of my people." Nobody knows. It's all anonymous. Everything is anonymous. No teacher gives her name. And bus drivers the same way. So anyway, I'd like, you know, Mr. Viennella got me really excited when he said that he was definitely going to consider that, and he was going to talk with Mr. Tomlin about it. I don't know if he's gotten a chance to yet, but one thing's for sure, if the School Board doesn't want to do it, I can do it. I can have all of the teachers, I can send a joint email, blanket email out to all the middle, elementary, middle, and high school teachers, and have them mail their envelopes to me anonymously, and then I can read them at a Board meeting. So it will get done, it's just how. And I'd like for Mr. Tom, I like my first idea best, where they can put a box and the teachers can do it, but the teachers can, the teachers can also mail things to me, whichever way the Board prefers to have it handled, but I'm excited, and actually, I even wrote down a question that we could, we could put. My questions would be something like, what would you change about our Code of Conduct policy? And is the code being enforced? And is it being applied at your school, in your job, to help you in the delivery of education? So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Ms. Ely.
As the principal, I can recall us having a box in each school, and that kind of went by the wayside. I think people, what I can recall is people were a little bit fearful of putting something in writing. Well, I'm just, you know, we have tried something like that before, so go for it. I think it's, I think it's great. I also had the privilege of going on the Golden Apple Caravan with Mr. Crawford. It was incredible. If you'll allow me to give the teachers' names, the Golden Apple Grace Daly from Fesidin, kindergarten teacher, she was great. David, let me see, Duffy, intensive reading coach, reading teacher at Osceola. Sarah Lynn was the Rookie Teacher of the Year, she's from Legacy. And Kim Merritt from Shady Hill Elementary, kindergarten. I hired her, by the way, as principal. Very proud of her. Debbie McNaul from Horizon, math teacher. And Robin Copert, language arts, Lakeware Middle. What I noticed with all of those teachers was how much they loved their job, and I wanted to make specific, draw specific attention to Horizon Elementary, Horizon Academy, where all of the students had uniforms. And I know as principal, years ago, I tried to implement that at Bellevue. I brought it before the Board, and it, it didn't fly, but when those children are in uniforms, their behavior changes. And I was very pleased to see all of the Horizon Academy kids in uniforms, and hopefully we can bring some of that back. I know one of the counties in Florida, the entire county has gone to uniforms. Another county, they get to choose by, by, by school, if the parents want it or the teachers, but I, I'm a proponent of uniforms. I believe that that brings discipline in the classroom. So, congratulations, teachers. We'll see you at the Golden Apple in a couple weeks.
Ms. Boynton.
Congratulations to all the Golden Apple nominees, and I want to, it is Black History Month, and I want to congratulate Mr. James and I for being honored on February twenty-first, which unfortunately is going to be the same day as the Golden Apple. So I'm going to do the Black Archives, and Mr. James will be doing Golden, the Golden Apple, and I think I just want to congratulate you, Mr. James, on that.
That goes to you as well.
Also, there is someone that is watching this television show tonight that would like for me to respond to some questions for them, and so I'm going to take the opportunity to let you know that I got your message, and I do believe- And I do believe that God is greater than any concern that you've sent to me. I do believe that if you could look right now and get to the point where you can see that you don't have my daughter hostage, that she is safe. And that if you ever thought that you could maintain that stance in my life, you would understand that I believe that God is greater and that the power of Him freed her. I want to say the other, to the other question that you laid out so clear was for me to, because you said you had her. I just want you to understand, my father, my father is deceased, but he was in the Marines. My brother was in the Army. And I have another brother that's in the Air Force. So I am an American. And I, I'm from Ocala, Florida, which is a country town. So there's a lot of country in me and I will never change. The one question that you want, I don't want to offend anyone by my response, but my response is, no, I cannot bow down to Islam in the sense that I was raised to love and respect God, the God that I know. I have no, no convictions or no quarrel with any other person because I said, you know, I would not bow down to it just because I have my own stance. I want to thank those people who you probably will get your message that helped free my daughter. And to use this arena as a way to communicate, I don't find it to be anything pleasant. But I will talk through it. And I will say that I think it was quite rude to even threaten me in any manner, shape or form, with my daughter. And I will say that I will take the stance again. No, I just will pray. And I do believe that God will come through with anything. And He has shown me that He can, and He did. And I will say to you, you understand that I did meet with Ahmed. And just like Ahmed understood, I will walk away from any conversation that is deadly to, or not say not deadly, that is confrontational or that has some hatred in it. So you must understand that I have no fear, for God has not given me the spirit of fear, but of love, power and of a sound mind. So just so you understand, a lot of people don't know, I was going through a lot of things and I kept it to myself. And I'm sure you're out there looking and watching and thinking that this would take me down, but because I believed truly that God can do anything, move and keep me safe and move my daughter and keep her safe. And at this point, I already know she's safe. And this, and I understand that most people don't, I did something that I didn't, I was not aware of that shocked you. I sent a message to, and this was way back. Sometimes I think even an autistic person can do what I did. I broke down a code and I sent it to George Bush, the president, former President George Bush, but also sent it to former Governor Jeb Bush. And I think that my actions in breaking that code down, coming where I'm from, will let you know that. It was about nine elevens, just so anyone, I mean, it's gonna, you're gonna get scaly thoughts and I'm not able to talk to anyone about it. The police are not able to come near me and they should continue their stance with that because I do have help. And I do, and I am okay. But there was someone who wanted to hear something on TV. So I hope I pleased you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Borington.
Yeah, my daughter is safe.
Ms. Marsh. Mrs. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Respond briefly to Mrs. Stacy's suggestion this evening and to share with the board and remind the board that we do have a mechanism already in place for receiving parent and faculty and staff input. Each year, we do a school improvement survey and that's done during a certain window period. And this year's window period for that, receiving that information electronically is February 24th through March the 7th. And this is advertised to our staff members. You don't have to participate, it's a voluntary thing, just much as what you were suggesting also. We do address issues about safety. We do address issues about the code of conduct. I can run a report for you by district. I can run a report for you by individual schools. And we do, and we do that. But more importantly, and the most important thing I want to share with you is that certainly I need to know and our staff needs to know what the specific problem is and where it is in order for us to address it. It can't be just a global issue if you want something to be addressed in some way. So as we proceed down this pathway, I certainly encourage you to remember that, that if I don't know about a problem, I need to know what it is before we can address it. You've already mentioned golden apple this evening. The Golden Apple Gala is on February 21st at the Circle Square Cultural Center. I look forward to that event. You asked me, and we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, about our textbook adoption process. And I shared with you that I was going to be preparing something on our website to enable people to review textbooks. And so this procedure is in place right now. And you, an individual that's interested can go onto our website. And I am, I was told that all you had to do was go to our website. And whenever I hear the words, "All you have to do," I ask somebody to give me a specific direction sheet. And so I passed out to you tonight a direction sheet where you can log on to our website. It tells you exactly where to go. It lists the textbook process that the state goes through, the procedure that we use here in Marion County, and then also the textbooks by subject area that we are reviewing right now. With one exception, all of the books that are currently under review are available electronically. That's with one exception. One book is not there electronically yet, but we will get that up on our website as soon as it is available. Pardon me? Yes, maybe, with the exception of one textbook. So you can, if you wander around, take this piece of paper, wander around on our website, find it. If you have some help, our staff will be happy to help you with that. And an individual can actually click on the textbook and review the, and look at the entire textbook that is under review and under consideration. I think, I think that meets with what you want and we'll tweak that and make that better as time progresses. Pardon me? Do want to announce that last Saturday, we had our middle school math counts contest at Maplewood. You have to announce who came in first. And Osceola Middle School came in first and Howard Middle School came in second. And if you want to be challenged by mathematical competition, you can go to those things. I try to stay away from those because it's rather embarrassing. I can't keep up with those middle school students. Next Thursday and Friday, the Big Spring Science Fair is hosted by Marion County. Local, public school, private school and area students, private school students also have, go to this science fair. It's at the National Guard Armory. In addition, in the back of the room, we have in the back of the room, a new collection of photographs. You might want to look at that. Those are our current support personnel instructors, instructional, non-instructional personnel, excuse me. Pictures are on the wall. It's addition to our boardroom and they'll hang up there for the balance of this year. And then a lot has been said about the Southeastern Youth Fair again, and I just give you this, I want you to go, but I give this one caution and a reminder. If you happen to go on an auction night, keep your hand to yourself unless you have your checkbook with you. I hope you'll enjoy that and please do be supportive. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. I just wanted to just share some things with you. I've talked, I have been talking about transition that board is making and what we're doing in education. I did have an opportunity to actually attend a couple of things. One was the focus on education. And that was the committee that met over at Thelma Parker Center. And the thing that I found so interesting about what we as a board look at sometimes and how other people perceive what we do. I think as a board, we have to recognize that we have a moment in time where people are really wanting to help us in terms of what we do with education. Finance was always, was the issue of the various group that was there. Everybody realized that the school board really needs funding to maintain the things that we have and to, really to improve on what we're doing in terms of technology and things like that. I also had an opportunity, and we, the superintendent and myself and along with Ms. Ellis, had an opportunity to sit in with, sit in with the county commission, the, all the municipalities in, and we talked about what's right with Ocala and what was wrong with Ocala and what was confusing about that. And they are moving in, in the right direction in the sense that everyone there understand and all the municipality know that as a school district, we have to take the lead in terms of educational opportunities and providing opportunities for our kids to either live in this community or come back to this community. We had the president of the junior college was there and he talked, well, it's not the junior college.
College.
I went to a junior college, it's Dick sometime. And so when we talked about what we needed to do in terms of Marion County and the educational process, we agreed that we as a collective group need to come together as a community to provide a, a clear vision of what our expectations are. When I look at the public policy issue that Judy Sane brought to us and we talked from, talked about kids from K through 12. In this meeting here, we talked about from K through the college life. So as a board, I will strongly encourage all of us to get involved with the trends that are taking place now because we need to hear what people are really saying about our school district. But we need to also, don't let people talk us out of a good thing. Because by and large, I will tell you this, that we do some good things in our school, but we only talk about, the majority of people only talk about the things that we don't do. I had, I represented the school board again at the Central Florida Coalition of School Boards. And I would like to encourage all the board members at some point that we need to go down there and sit and listen to what is actually occurring in the state. We will be getting some information from the School Board Association because I asked the question of how many people were, how many districts were having a sales tax initiative in some shape or form. And when I looked at, out of the group, I think, I think that the majority of them, eight of them were at that point. And what we are facing in this country is the same crisis that everybody else is facing. So we're not in it alone. The biggest thing I would like to encourage our board to do, guys, just don't talk ourselves out of a good thing because I really feel that we're doing some really neat things. And this is transitional period. I had Mr. Rock, what's his name, the bus driver ladies?
Laura.
Laura. Because that's another main state of our school system that has changed. And we have a tremendous opportunity because as most of you know, Bobby Engelhardt has been here for years. And when you get a chance to change the guard, we are doing this gradually. And I caution you, let's take the time to do it right. And so this, this is why I'm getting very passionate about this thing because I just feel that this is the moment that we've been waiting for. That's where I am. Thank you for listening.
A question and just a quick comment. I wholeheartedly agree with you about our, our transportation department. I think it's only gonna continue on equally what we have and maybe get even, even better. I mean, we've got a safety record that is not matched by, I believe, any county in this state. We have, you heard the numbers tonight. And I don't think, just to make sure people understood, when Mr. Gregory said 25,000 students, he's talking about 25,000 students per day, not just over a year period. I mean, that we take from point A to point B and back. And that's just, I think, a huge accomplishment with what we, with the fact that, you know, children are riding very safely on our buses. So I agree with you. I'm looking forward to any time that there's a positive change. And I think Ms. Engelhardt did a marvelous job and I think the next lady's now going to do an equally marvelous job. One quick question, you said sales tax, sales tax or mileage increase?
No, they were talking, they were speaking in terms of sales tax down at Central Florida Coalition.
Just sales tax, not mileage increase?
We had one or two that already had mileage.
Do mileage, so they're doing sales tax for maintenance or things like that?
Maintenance and things like that. And we also had a group that had combined with the counties and cities and had a countywide. And we also, they all, that's also in the group, were a group that had an air of alarm tax and it was expiring and they was getting ready to bring it back. So it was one of those things where we, they will send us some information and we will send it all to you, Ms. Stacy.
I'd like to ask Mr. Tomlin a question. You spoke about the electronic surveys.
Yes, ma'am.
When they send the electronic surveys in, do they not come through their email?
I do not know how that's, that's done.
Does anybody know?
I can find that out for you. I know that there is often concern that if I fill out an email or send, or send something in electronic, it can be traced back to me.
I was always under the impression that it was, it was, you're not really using your email. It's a, it's a sign in where you get to answer a question or put a comment in or whatever it was and it was a blind response.
We, and maybe it's different now, but three years ago, we, you know, we got the responses, but we didn't get the person's name who sent it. So, and it was just compiled, the district compiled the total numbers on each question and sent that out to us.
Well, I just feel like we need to, sometimes the right question isn't there. And maybe we just need to ask for input from the teachers. And if the district doesn't want to put a little box at the schools, that's okay. I can get from the technical department, I can just get the blanket email and just send out a blanket email to the teachers and they can, and I'll give them my address and they can send it to my home. That'll work fine. And I'll read it at a board meeting. I was thinking it would be better to read them at a dean, you know, and with the deans and where they could handle it, but if that's.
Bring them to the board.
Bring them to the board meeting.
I have no problem.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, board? Okay. I wish to acknowledge that the board have received their alternative placement list for students through January 24, 2014. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Saying now, by the way, we had no expulsions or anything this week, so we got a round of applause for that. So, but they told me that we'll be loaded up next month. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Borington. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passed 5-0. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.